Good morning. Good Thursday morning to you all and welcome to our special session this morning on Making the Difference, the SDG Data Alliance and the international collaboration and partnerships that have been undertaken with this data alliance. My name's Greg Scott. I'm in the UN GGIM Secretariat in New York and I'm going to moderate this session over the next 90 minutes. And we're going to do this session in two parts where we'll have a welcome and an overview and a bit of detail about the data alliance in the first component with my panel here. And then we will have a discussion with a second set of panelists on implementation and their perspectives from countries on how this alliance is moving forward in the future. Okay, so without further ado, what I'd like to do is introduce, who probably doesn't need a lot of introduction, my director Stefan Swinefest from Statistics Division and UNGGIM Secretariat on my left. And then we'll allow him to make some nice introductions before we continue down the panel. So Stefan, over to you.
Thank you. Can I also steal your program? Thank you. Just so that everybody sees, I couldn't do anything without Greg on my side. Good morning, everybody. Let me start us off with a few reflections on the title of this session here, Making the Difference: SDG Data Alliance, International Collaborations and Partnerships. Let's start in the middle of that, the SDGs. This is of course our big policy agenda and I've had the pleasure of being part of the negotiations and it took two years for the countries of this world, I mean, to agree on this. And this was since the very beginning, it was meant to be an ambitious agenda. And what was most important though, it wasn't only the goals, we're always talking about the goals, it was goals, targets and indicators. And that made this agenda an accountability framework. And it gave us, and I will call us the information professionals, it gave us a moment of glory, but also a lot of responsibility. So we, I like the idea that we as information professionals, statisticians and geospatial information experts, we are not only an afterthought, but we were at the table from the very beginning. And we were also not the police that only at the end, at the finish line measure whether we got there or not. I think we with our information, with the data, were actually considered enablers. And I think that was an important game change. And so we have, and one other big change from the previous development agendas, there have been many development agendas at the UN. We had several decades of development in the last century and then we had of course the Millennium Development Goals. But another big game changer was that the SDGs were popularized. They were not only exchanged and discussed between governments. And so it wasn't just considered a task of the governments of this world. They negotiated the agenda, but then it was immediately recognized that we are in for that all together. And I think, I think one of the big success stories of the SDGs is the, everybody knows them. I mean, a lot of people, partners in the private sector, academia, civil society, we're all working together, people even in the streets know what the SDGs are. And I think with that sense of partnership, and that gets me to the second part of the title here, Alliance, International Collaboration and Partnership, that was a very smart move that we brought everybody into the boat and to do this together. So I mean, talking about the SDG Alliance today, I'm very excited because it's a very good example of private-public partnerships. It is an alliance with a purpose. And I was thinking, if you want to bake a pie, you need all the right ingredients. And in this case, we have all the right ingredients in the alliance together. You need money, you need technology, you need purpose, and you need a mandate, and it's all there in the alliance. And that makes the alliance so strong. And I think that makes it, and I'm a very practical person at the end of the day. I mean, it's nice to talk about the what, I mean, what is the agenda and what are the data? But the real question is how are we going to do that and at the country level? And I think that's what I'm really looking forward to in this session. Now, the last part that I wanted to talk about in the title, I noticed that it says making the difference. I mean, we're not saying making a difference, we are saying we are making the difference here. And it's a little bit cocky, but on the other hand, it's nothing wrong with being cocky. And I mean, this is a big agenda, so we better be a little bit assertive. And we have a big, we have a big contribution to make with our data. And if I look forward, 2023 is going to be a big year. The SDGs are in trouble, we all know that. But we have many crises, but as usual, every crisis is also an opportunity. So the Secretary General is talking about rescuing the SDGs, accelerating, and we have to be part of this. So I'm looking forward very much to this discussion because it's extraordinarily opportune and timely as we are reaching the midpoint of the SDG period. So thank you, everybody, for being here and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Stefan. Some really pertinent points there in terms of an introduction. So thank you for that, Stefan, and hitting all those right chords in the title of this session. So what we're going to do now, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce Sergio Cordova from the Public Foundation. Sergio, you would know spoke in our plenary yesterday and gave an overview of the SDG Data Alliance and also a video. And I would also like to introduce Charles Brigham from ESRI. And Charles and Sergio are just going to have a conversation with you on giving an overview, a bit more depth into the data alliance itself. And picking up particularly what Stefan was saying is this making the difference and the fact that while you can have a development agenda, while you can have implementation frameworks, the implementation at the ground level, the doing, the what and the how and making the difference, as you say, is critically important. And how do we do that? And that's really what we want to spend some time today talking about and sharing with you in our two panel sessions today. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to you Sergio and Charles for the next few minutes to provide your perspectives. Thank you.
So it's really nice to have just a casual conversation with Sergio because we have such a history in working with him on different UN events and activities, but I'm going to put him on the spot here and reveal some insider information about his past with ESRI. And I just wanted to say, you know, when we met, we were talking about how my mom can go to a coffee shop and buy a cup of coffee and know that that coffee was sustainably sourced, contributing to a specific goal, target and indicator, and could make a conscious decision at a local level to feel like they're participating in the SDG process. So, and we were chatting casually at that time. And that transpired into coming to Redlands. I know it was a tumultuous time for you to get there, you're traveling. But I wanted you to just quickly summarize the conversation you had with the founder of ESRI, Jack Dangermond. And just share with us just a moment what that was like, and I'd like to hear that, in terms of what ESRI does and what public does.
No, absolutely. So this is being recorded? You know, thank you for that, Charles. And you know, yes, I remember that conversation because just to kind of go backwards was, you know, that's when we had launched the SDG Fund right at the UN, which was the first initiative of the United Nations and of the entire, you know, Sustainable Development Goals, which was launched on April 15th, April 16 by the Spanish government ahead of the ratification of the Sustainable Development Goals. And the idea was, how can we actually look at the supply chain and look at, you know, how we're building sort of a financial infrastructure on the ground that makes it all the way to the coffee that you and I were talking about? And then where do we get that data? Geospatial, right? Information on that woman or man or family that is actually farming these coffee beans? And then how do we invest in that person rather than invest in Starbucks who's giving them only 10% of what their real value is? And really kind of how do we make that direct connection so that the purchaser can know where the coffee beans were made and then support that family and be able to say, hey, you know what, I want to support that family and maybe send them $100, maybe send them 500 bucks or, or actually bring in a real investment. And then with the UN, we were looking at and saying, okay, we're the risk capital. So we're going to put the capital on the ground so that we could unlock this potential. But obviously in a supply chain perspective, we were still missing a lot of data, a lot of information. And when you and I were talking about that, you know, basically you explained to me a lot of the vision, you know, that Jack had around, you know, how data, if it had the right storytelling, we could actually educate everybody that the data itself is not boring, it's just how we tell the story around the data and the information. And so, you know, Charles and the team had engineered a meeting for Jack and I to happen. And you know, as such things happened, Jack's like, hey, you have to come to the user conference and meet me at whatever, 10 a.m. And meanwhile, I'm flying, I was like, I think in Australia somewhere, and I had to fly through Turkey and Turkey airport got bombed. That's literally when that happened. So then I'm like sitting there trying to actually make my way to San Diego from, you know, from Istanbul. So I actually had to hop in a car, drive three hours to the next, to Ankara, to the next airport. Because I was like, I'm not missing this. I had about seven hours of delta that I could actually play with being, but I had to land. But I ended up landing in San Diego, I think at 7 a.m., went checked into the hotel, I was supposed to check in the night before, and sat down with Jack and the team. And it was interesting because we had like 15 people in the room, right? And then Jack and I were sitting like this and everyone was like, you know, we're not sure, you know, how to explain what you do, but you know, just let's not make it confusing because Jack won't get it. And we sat down with Jack and he goes, you know, I started ESRI as a foundation. And he's like, but unfortunately, he's like, and I was so early in my days that people were, we couldn't get the right funding, we couldn't get the right framework, the right structure to live this thing to where it is today. He's like, so we have to switch the structure. And when I explained to him what public does and how we use media and our, we look at currencies as media, data and technology, and how we're looking at the future and looking at future innovation, how to bring them into the public sector, into the innovation, into the impact sector. You know, it was funny because everyone thought that meeting was going to take over 30, 40 minutes. You know, I think it took about seven minutes of him, three and a half minutes him give me a high level, I gave him a high level. And he's like, you know, he's like, this is perfect. You have the storytelling, you have access to media infrastructure where, and you're doing it, where you help launch the SDGs and all these other elements. And he's like, and we have data and we need partnerships. And he's like, we both care about the Sustainable Development Goals. And then how do we make sure that ultimately, not just what we're talking about today with the SDG Data Alliance, but also how, as we've all been sharing our visions, is how maybe by, you know, before the, you know, the 2030 agenda comes to an evolution, how can we make sure that folks, as we heard in our plenary session, have access to this information? Civil society, Stefan, you were talking about, the aspect of civil society, sometimes we get caught up in our own work where we say, we're doing it for the benefit of civil society, but are we really giving it to them? Are they really, do they really have a seat at the table? And you know, it was fascinating because that conversation really, literally, I don't think it was more than 15 minutes. We shook hands, it was like, high five, all right, good, I gotta go. And I was like, okay. I just flew 18 hours for a 15 minute meeting. But it was probably to me the most important meeting that we had as an organization because that handshake that we did has been the partnership that lives here today with the SDG Data Alliance and, you know, with ESRI's commitment, right? And their, you know, really steadfast commitment of making sure that the technology is there and the backbone, and we bring in the programmatic and the development and help bring in the capital and organize the partnerships so that, like, as you said, the multi-stakeholder, to us, multi-stakeholderism is the way forward because we need to bring all the different stakeholders and partnerships, partnerships, partnerships. So I'll stop right there because the story goes on, but it was, you know.
So I think the premise here is that after that conversation, that transpired into a lot of different work streams. And what we did at ESRI is we really dug into the indicator framework. We started to build our products based on the metadata for the SDGs. We supported an API development in collaboration with the UN. And we started to think about, what if we can envision a world where at the local level, people's information can be abstracted into web services? And those web services from a local level can transpire internationally, across different spaces. So that got Jack thinking about this geographic nervous system for the world and how that's going to be created. And if you know him, he's very hyper-focused on the local level. So while he endorses the SDGs, we all know, and as he does, it has to be really implemented at the local level. So our work in trying to support the SDGs is in building our technology in conjunction with the Goal Target Indicator Series so that when our users are able to use our technology towards looking at how to address the SDGs, they don't need to know what Indicator 2.3.1A is. And so this is also with you Sergio, you know, we built out the SDG Data Hub and we're democratizing it to our users, our geospatial people. And if I were to ask the audience here, they would all know what web services are. But we step out of the room, no one knows what web service is. When I try to explain that to my mom, it takes me a long time and she still doesn't get it. So we need to get better at communicating that and providing a way to share our expertise as geospatial experts and what that value brings to the process. So early, you know, again, in that process with Jack, Sergio himself, we knew we needed to work with GGIM. And I started to, you know, force the IGIF and the Country Action Plans onto Sergio, which he probably still doesn't necessarily understand, but is comfortable with. Nevertheless, that process with UNSD and supporting the country level action plans and the IGIF has allowed the technology that we've been developing to be utilized in the SDG Data Hubs as a demonstration effect. So that when countries, organizations, academia, civil society, you as individuals can use this SDG Data Hub, you're able to participate in the larger ecosystem. And the focus is on not just the SDGs, the focus is on a data alliance for the future. So when we branded this SDG Data Alliance, I asked Sergio, well, how do we brand this? We went back and forth and with Greg and Tio and other people to figure out what's the best way to make this lasting. And the data alliance resonated the most. But we're still struggling with communication of what geospatial brings to the table. There's a lot of zombie applications out there on SDGs. We know what zombie applications are. They're applications that come out, they're not sustained, they drop off. They might be nice visuals, but they don't last. So we needed to build something that lasts. And we're working on improving the data hub technology, the hub technology to accommodate all the SDG Indicator goals, targets and series. So my point to get to is, as we've evolved there with supporting the Country Action Plan process through providing money to countries, through providing capacity building resources in terms of funds and expertise, through providing ESRI professional services, professional services from public, professional services from highly trained experts in SDG 10, Reduced Inequalities, from the Kellogg Foundation team, we're now at a point where we need to leverage public foundation. And the reason I'm saying that to you all because I wanted you to share an example of how you communicate the SDGs to a larger audience that we are not familiar with. So I wanted to ask you, like, what, give us an example of how you've done that.
Well, I want to take a step back and thank you for that, Charles. Where, when we were looking at the SDG Data Alliance, the context, and as you guys, everybody here knows, you know, when the UN comes up with a new initiative, it's got probably about six plus letters, right? And acronyms and, you know, focused on what that initiative is and then what are we going to name it, right? So it's always my biggest challenge, you know, inside the house, if you will, is kind of not forgetting that we need to communicate to people, not just to ourselves. Because we all understand what the acronyms mean, but at the end of the day, you know, when you start talking about data, you're talking about very intelligent people that are very focused and quantify everything, right? So we said, when we looked at it, we said, our biggest sort of North Star at that moment was getting the sdg.org domain. Because, you know, although the, you know, you'd imagine that that would have been done ahead of 2015, September, you know, 21st, but it was not. And it was in a public domain and basically what we did as a foundation is we went out and actually acquired and, you know, basically, you know, forced this person to not make it a super expensive acquisition, rather to be focused on saying, hey, look, you're going to help the world. This is something that, this should be the platform that anybody from Brazil, Kenya or Tongo can actually tap into and be able to access information in a sort of, you know, future tomorrow. And not only about their country, but what they care about and what audiences or societies they want to support. And that was a huge win because I felt that that kind of really gave it a lot of traction. And it also kind of gave us a forward-looking strategy on communications plan because now there's only one domain you need to know, sdg.org, right? So if you, no matter what, and when you look at sdg.org, what we've also done is really made the sdg.org really equal data, right? So basically what we're saying is if you want information, you know, you're going to be coming here. When you look at our experience and, you know, we've been involved in a communications strategy group from day one on helping, you know, develop what the SDGs were going to be, how we're going to communicate it to a global audience, how we're going to communicate it beyond the government and NGO sector and IGO sector. Because that was the greatest challenge those days was, how do we get that young eight-year-old girl who's selling cookies to maybe have an option to not just buy a Barbie doll or a bike, but maybe invest that money and help somebody in Thailand and India or in Pakistan or Brazil? And in that element of educating that young person from that early stage that they too have the ability to make the world better was really an interesting challenge because the whole idea was, okay, how do we talk to these stakeholders? And then also how do we communicate what's going on at the UN? And so one of the products that I think Charles was alluding to, one of the things that we've done over the last couple of years was also looking at how we bring in the next generation. And we created a platform called the SDG Media Zone. The SDG Media Zone today has become a flagship program of the UN. Earlier when we started it was really an idea of how we communicate high-level meetings and stakeholders in public, private, civil society, NGOs and IGOs, right? With the government sector, whether it's a small Pacific island convening, or resilience, or around climate, or around what have you. And, you know, that platform today, I would say alone, has probably reached over about 1.6 billion humans, not impressions, impressions is probably, you know, times 100. And it's reached over 100 countries and we translate that in many languages. We utilize the UN infrastructure on UN TV, UN Radio, all the different assets. We bring in folks from Al Jazeera, BCC, and really to start to communicate what the conversation is that's going on and what the human interest is. Because part of what we need to do is translate these conversations into why does it matter to me, to someone in a community? And, you know, most recently, you know, this Little Dinosaur was an initiative that came out of UNDP where they came to us and they said, we need to talk about climate, we need to tell the world that there is a real climate issue, right? And how do we do this? And, you know, the head of partnerships at UNDP said, Sergio, I want to bring a dinosaur to the UN and I want the dinosaur to speak at the General Assembly and we need to tell the world, what are your thoughts? And of course I was like, yes, we're in. Whatever it is, we'll figure it out, let's do it. You know, fast forward today, that video has been watched at the close to 2 billion times. It's been translated into 57 languages. It's not only a video, it's an activation, don't choose extinction. It talks about, and it gives people a platform that allows them to learn about the SDGs, allows them to learn about, you know, specific climate-related concerns and questions, right? So to us, when we look at all this and we start to look at, you know, how geospatial plays into that, how data and information, what we did in this thing was, one of my most important caveats was if we're not creating a data architecture that feeds into the sdg.org platform, then I was like, then I'm not interested, right? So to us, that's, all these partnerships need to be upfront. Go ahead.
I just, how do we as geospatial people take advantage of this? How do we do it? I don't have an answer, but I just want to put it out there because we need to. We're all, you all are doing extremely valuable work, but no one outside of our circles is able to necessarily absorb that. And I think the multi-stakeholder nature of what we've tried to do here is getting at that. So I do want to take a plug here right now to say that some of the countries are here, some of the very technical people in the process or John and other people, Greg, are here with us. They're the ones on the ground doing the work and I want to commend those countries, those organizations, academia. It's a huge network in this alliance, but we have challenges. And I have challenges communicating with you Sergio on how to do this better. And so we need to get there.
Well, data right now is probably one of the most important currencies in, you know, from here on forward, right? And I think that a lot of that is, you know, people are starting to see the value, governments are starting to see the value. You know, we've seen it with the ITU now changing hands as the first woman in 147 years that, you know, is looking at universal access for all so that we also have access because without connectivity, some of these conversations, you know, don't get there. And I think that, you know, from the country level, and as we talked about, it's kind of putting together communication strategies so that the country level can actually help engage more folks at the local level, at the regional level, and then also celebrate this at the global level, as we are doing here.
So we have to wrap up. I want to just say that join, join this movement. It's a new approach. We're inclusive and we want to share all the work we're doing through the vectors that we have and we want to leverage the talents that we all have because we certainly can't do it alone. We need everybody. It's going to take all of us.
And the website is sdg.org, but yeah, sorry, alliance.stg.org, but it's a setup. Give the website plug like a commercial.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. And look, I'll be honest too, we could have this conversation going on for quite a while. And the thing I like about it is we're not diving down into nuts and bolts. We're actually talking about communication and influence and leadership and impact. And we don't do that enough in our community. And, you know, if you want to just go and Google Dino the dinosaur and have a look at this video around not choosing extinction, these are the sort of things that the capabilities that are out there, but we're not leveraging some of this enough. And this is going to be really important when we, when we think about what we do in the future from a geospatial and other data perspective, where do we fit in that data ecosystem? So Sergio and Charles, thanks so much. It's, that's been, that's been a really wonderful insight. So thank you. And now what I want to do is just introduce John Kida. And John's one of our, our strategy team leads that's working on the data alliance. And John's going to talk more about, as we extend to what Charles and Sergio have been introducing, is around this collaboration, these partnerships and how this is working with the data alliance. So John, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I like the word nuts and bolts because I'm more the nuts and bolts man. And in a sense, I've worked with the SDG Data Alliance as an interface between what Greg and Stefan and Sergio and Charles have said and the countries who are actually delivering on the ground. We're not doing the delivery, countries are doing the delivery. So hola, buenas dias. Bonjour, good morning. Yes, that's, I'll come back to that in a minute. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about the process and then I'm going to give you some personal thoughts. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about the process, and then I'm going to give you some personal thoughts, just so you understand what it is that we're working with the countries on. And in a sense, I would say I've worked with six or seven countries at the moment, and it's the greatest pleasure to actually see how every country has different challenges, different needs. But one thing that comes together all the time is this communication, communicating the benefits of what we do to decision-makers. Now, I was really taken by Antonio Guterres' quote yesterday, no, the first day of the Congress, "To measure progress, to make progress." And that is exactly what we, as the SDG Data Alliance, are doing with the countries. We're helping deliver IGIF country-level action plans, helping the countries deliver country-level action plans. And we're helping the countries deliver their national SDG data hubs. So two aspects of that that really fit into what the Secretary General was saying. The delivery team, we're a partnership. And we've clearly got Sergio and the public organization, the partners, the United Nations, and ESRI and so on. The country project teams and the country leadership. Because this absolutely has to be done by the countries, by country leadership, by country project teams. And then, as I say, there's a small resource team, myself, Tim Traynor, Derek Clark, and we provide the interface. We provide the support between the SDG Data Alliance and the country delivery teams. And the philosophy here is it is very much country-led, country-delivered. And there's a real advantage to that, because the countries have to deliver their new or develop their new partnerships internally, work with new stakeholders, build their capacities themselves. And in a sense, you feel a sense of ownership of your country action plan and your SDG data hub when you've built it yourself. There are many countries already on board. I'm not going to go through them, they're listed here, but it just gives you an idea of where the SDG Data Alliance, where we are already reaching, and a number of those are in this room. Now, the country-level action plans, first of all, you're aware of the Integrated Geospatial Information Framework. Sergio, this could be a lesson for you here, I guess. And the different parts, the strategic framework, et cetera, et cetera, down to the country-level action plans. We're about helping that assessment and analysis and helping the countries deliver their country-level action plans. And an action plan has a lot of elements to it. Of course, it's got actions, but it's also got timeframes, it's also got the funding requirements, it's also got the sort of measurement progress in order to measure implementation, et cetera, et cetera. An action plan is quite a major document in the sense of what it delivers for a country in terms of improving its geospatial capability in order to support the delivery of national priorities, including sustainable development goals. And you're aware, most of you will be aware, that it works across all of these different pathways of the IGIF. And communications and engagement is absolutely one of those pathways. And we do this with countries in a way of helping understand and plan how we're going to deliver a country-level action plan, working across the country in terms of across stakeholders, in terms of assessing and analyzing the current state and where the country wants to go with its geospatial information to meet country priorities, and then deliver the action plan itself. And there's a whole set of tools to do this. It's not a case of throwing a problem at a country. The United Nations developed a whole set of tools to support. So I'll give you an example here. Here we go. One of the tasks, a baseline survey. We describe what the purpose is, what it needs, and what it will achieve. And that's part of the tool. We provide templates that enable a country to actually work with templates in Spanish or French or English in order to gather the information or to deliver the documents they're delivering. And we talk about the methodology. So in a sense, it's not just a case of, here you go, country, off you go. It's tools in order to support them. And then, as a resource team, we provide advice as the countries do this work themselves. And the SDG data hubs are no different. And Charles has talked and Sergio's talked about the SDG data hubs. It's a way really of helping demonstrate, measure, and be inclusive in the delivery of the Sustainable Development Goals. And these hubs bring together ESRI technology, they bring together a whole range of partners in country, the data providers, the SDG leads, the statistics organizations, all come together in order to create these SDG data hubs online on the cloud. And we have a, I've got to say, a developing process for this. In a sense, we start small and grow. The idea is we get some of the targets and indicators working on a data hub, which is available across governments or across the public, depending on what the country wants. And then we increase the number of targets, indicators, and goals. Because once people see the value, they want to contribute. And so the tool grows, the SDG data hub grows within a country. The resource team, that's the three of us, the interface, provide that interface. But in a sense, we're about enabling the country to do both the action plan and the data hub themselves. And you can see here a range of the sort of work, and it changes. You know, each country seeks different things from us. But one of the key things here is the learning opportunities and helping develop learning and capacity development opportunities. And the very fact that countries are in this room or the ESRI user conference is because the Alliance and the United Nations are trying to help create that greater understanding, which of course goes back into the countries and provides greater support therein. So I wanted to give you some perspectives on this. Country-led, country-delivered. I really stress that because that is what we are about, supporting the countries in the process. Yeah, there is a process. I've talked about these processes. It's absolutely adaptable, and different countries adapt the process in different ways to meet their needs. And some stick to the steps and others go completely different directions. And that's great, and we support that, because it's about the end point, not the process here. I think it's really important that I stress the language point. We all here are speaking in English, but actually Spanish, French, and other languages in countries. And clearly, these action plans, these data hubs, need to adapt to meet the language needs of the country. And so do we, as a team in supporting. So, yeah, I've been invited to Guatemala by Paola to learn my Spanish in Guatemala over the winter, for example. That would be lovely. Sergio, have you got some money for that? Anyway, leadership buy-in. And what countries are really good at is getting leadership buy-in. Ministerials, it might take months to get it, but if you can get that ministerial support, then actually creating the data hub, creating the action plan becomes a little easier. And it's not just the leadership, it's the wider stakeholders. Because no longer is this just about the geospatial community. It is about the data community, the SDG community. We have to reach out, and countries are reaching out into places that are outside the traditional comfort zone of geospatial individuals and geospatial organizations, into the user community, into the individuals even that make use of geospatial and data in order to do their business. Timeframes. You know, this isn't something that's going to take six months. This does take time. It takes time because actually you've got to build teams, you've got to bring stakeholders and leadership with you. And ultimately, you've then got to do the planning, deliver the action plan, deliver the data hub. All the time through this process, we have to think about the endpoint. The endpoint is not an action plan or a data hub. The endpoint is a data hub that is being used to support the country, improve its environment across all the SDGs that are relevant to the country. And it's about better geospatial information, not an action plan. So all the time, we have to think about the end. We have to think about how we're going to communicate, who's going to fund the implementation of different aspects, and how we're going to implement different aspects. We have to think beyond that goal of just an action plan or just a platform. In countries, there is a true desire to learn. And I think this is something that all through the process, we have learned as well. How do we support, how do we provide materials with the data hub, the training that ESRI puts in to support the development of individuals so they can use and create the data hub? These things are really important to us. And I think most of all, it's a partnership. We really are a partnership for development. It's a partnership within countries between organizations. It's a partnership between the Data Alliance, which is reaching out into new areas, and the countries. It is a true partnership. And this is really important, because SDGs are achieved through collaboration and partnership. So I go back to this slide, really to summarize my point. We're about helping countries develop and then implement action plans to create better geospatial information that supports country priorities, and in particular, the Sustainable Development Goals. We're about a data hub that helps measure progress against the SDG goals, helps make decisions, helps countries make decisions on investment to improve delivery against the SDGs, and helps get the community across the country involved in the SDGs. And it's about developing within a country as well. It's about the development of new ways of thinking as countries move through this process. And lastly, as I've stressed time and time again, it's about partnerships. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for providing some of those nuts and bolts for us. Really important, really important stuff. So with that context, we're now going to hear from some countries. So you lot are going to go. So thank you, thank you, Stefan, Sergio, Charles, thanks, John. And we're now going to do a quick swap over and actually bring up some of our countries for them to provide a few vignettes of information. So let's just take a 20-second break. Can I please call up Tulu from Ethiopia, Fernand Assiri from Cameroon, Sidney from Esuatini, Fernand Bale from Cote d'Ivoire, Sergio from Mozambique, and Andre from UNECA? Welcome. I know where our time is now being eaten away. So rather than have introductions, and I know that all your names that are on the website and on the app, so let's just get straight into it. What I'd like to do first is just get your two- to three-minute perspectives on this Data Alliance, how you see from your countries what that value is, what that need is, and perspectives that, I guess, are really important to your own national development priorities as well. Some thoughts on that. Tulu, we'll start with you first.
Thank you very much, Greg. And I'm Tulu from Ethiopia. I'll give you some perspective on the SDG Data Alliance project implementation in at the country level. Ethiopia has been, actually, we have been very lucky in kind of historical circumstance. The adoption of the Integrated Geospatial Information Framework in actually during the aid sessions of the UN GGM was aligned with an institutional arrangement in our country related to the geospatial sector. And in 2018, we made a kind of institutional arrangement where we actually used the concept of the Integrated Geospatial Information Framework. All the nine strategic pathways were considered in restatement of our institutional structure. We established all relevant technical departments that can advance the nine strategic pathways along with, in partnership with all relevant national stakeholders. Also surprisingly, in 20, end of 2021, we again made a kind of national institutional arrangement. And this actually coincides with also the SDG Data Alliance initiative. And the institutional arrangement, the recent one was merging of geospatial with space sector. And in this process, also, we considered the adoption of appropriate technical departments and core focus areas that can advance the implementation of both the IGIF country-level action plan and also the SDG Data Alliance. And in this process, we learned that this frequent, even if there is a frequent change in institutional arrangement, but we take advantage of the existing global initiative towards advancing geospatial information management. And we are now in a good position as a nation. We have all included also the IGIF implementation as one mandate of our institute. And we have a clear mandate, and also we are working along with all stakeholders. With respect to the status of the IGIF, we already developed a country-level action plan. We make a final, made also already final endorsement with national key stakeholders. The final version of the country-level action plan will be published very soon. It's in editorial process, and we will communicate with global audience. And we are currently developing the SDG Data Alliance project on the implementation part. We have been discussing with key relevant government agencies. The process of getting support from high leaders from the ministries actually took us several months. Recently, we were able to communicate with Ministry of Planning, which is actually responsible to use the Saikano platform to monitor and track SDG indicators and also to implement spatial planning. So we have been able to communicate the importance and value of the SDG Data Alliance, especially in terms of understanding the current status of the SDG indicators across geographic areas, the magnitude of implementation, and also the gaps related to the national plan. So the Plan of Ministry of Planning and other relevant stakeholders are very much excited to advance this initiative forward. We are currently reviewing different reports. We are reviewing the country report on SDG that has been sent to the United Nations in 2021, and reviewing data and identifying some sort of data gaps. In a couple of weeks, we will have a first national workshop where all the relevant ministries and stakeholders will be participated, and we will advance the implementation forward.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Tulu. So you're a long way down this path. You've very much done a lot of work on the IGIF, and now it's really about how we implement through this Data Alliance process. Fernand, your perspectives, Cameroon, lots of challenges, lots to do. You have a vision here. Your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Greg. First of all, let me express my gratitude to SDG Data Alliance for his support and team who try to encat us for Cameroon. Derek, Tim and John. Dear Cameroon, we are grateful for choosing our country and the daily sports. For the accomplishment of our duty, we put in place in Cameroon a team with nine members for five institutions, represent five institutions. We have a Ministry of Planning and Regional Development. We have a National Statistic Institute. We have University of Yaoundé as user. We have one member representing NGO and National Mapping Institute. The first problem we have is to bring all stakeholders around the table. It's not easy for the first. I just mentioned that we started with that process in July 2022. And when, at now, we have done five meetings. And during the meeting, we share our experiences and we understood the interest of working together. We also identifying gaps and start to analyze them. We finally have draw up a work program and a timetable. Now, our next meeting will take place from November 9 and 11 in form of workshop, three days workshops to consolidate the draft of national action plan and finalize the structure of the data hub in accordance with the prescription, the prescribed framework. And in Cameroon, we chose for the nine paths, where we choose to begin with four. The four pathways. For the four, we have problem with the first is institutional arrangement, governance, legal policy, data and communication and partnership. We try to join the two because it's a crucial problem in our country. And the bigger challenge we face is to bring stakeholders together around the table. It's not easy because every institution want to work a part. It's not easy for us. And with nine members, to have a meeting with all the nine members is not easy because we are not too close. We are in the country separate. And especially with the National Statistic Institute. It's not easy, but we're trying to have with some kind of dialogue because every time I went there to explain, explain, more explain and then we have the okay two weeks ago and will be present in the workshop we organize on November. I think now we have benefit of funding of SDG data, training and for the next day, SRI technology will be easy for us after the workshop to benefitize of all that occasion. Now we are very engaged in Cameroon to achieve that process maybe on February or March 2023. That's what I can say about Cameroon team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fernand. And some really important messages too there around the fact that we've got to bring so many stakeholders together, even within country. And the fact that also those stakeholders may not be in one location. They are scattered around the country and that's an issue in itself. It's a logistical issue for sure. Thank you for that. Fernand Bale, welcome. Nice to see you again. I know you've been very active in your work. Some perspectives, please.
Hello. Okay. Thank you very much, Greg. And by now, Cote d'Ivoire is not part of SDG Data Alliance, but what I'm hearing today, I'm knocking at the door. So please, please put Cote d'Ivoire in the list of the countries. So yeah, of course, SDGs are the main drivers of all the governments policies today. And Cote d'Ivoire is very engaged in that way. And but we are facing a lot of difficulties regarding data access and data accessibility and sharing data among all the stakeholders, all the organization. And I would like to point out one thing we facing, it is deforestation. You know, in 60 years, Cote d'Ivoire lost 80%. 80% of its forest coverage. And today, it remains only 3 million hectares of forest in Cote d'Ivoire. So if nothing is done, at the hand of a decade perhaps, there will be no more forest in Cote d'Ivoire. So the government consequently decided to tackle this situation and through a lot of programs such as Cocoa and Forest Initiative. While the trend continues even inside protected areas in Cote d'Ivoire. And recently, we carried out a study that showed that agriculture contributes to 60% of deforestation in Cote d'Ivoire and mostly 38% from cocoa farms. Yeah, we all here love chocolate. And Cote d'Ivoire is the first world producer of cocoa in the world. So how can we balance that? Can we be sit down and see our economy collapse? Can we stop producing cocoa? That's why it is very important to measure, as John said, you have to measure what the effort we are doing in restoration the forest and securing what is remaining. And it is also important to see how this phenomenon is occurring all in the country. And so at this, come on the end, no. So since January this year, we took the opportunity to discuss with many organizations in our country and international level. We discussed with GRC, European Union Commission, Academia, the National Statistic Office, NGO farmers and so on. And because we know that if nothing is done today, it will be very difficult to change the trend in the future. So fortunately, we succeed in creating or building up a project. This project will help us to update the land use, land cover maps in Cote d'Ivoire. And the FRO decided to fund this project. And but as Fernando said, it wasn't easy to have the support of all the partners, all the organizations working as in the screen Cote d'Ivoire. Because you have to talk with farmers, you have to talk with chocolate industries, you have to talk with NGOs, you have to talk with ministry and so on. It isn't easy to put everybody together and to address this problem. So as conclusion, I can say that we're eager to join the alliance.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Fernand, you really do, you strike some pretty critical points there when you think about development and where that's going. And I think sometimes in the developed world, we don't think about this so much. So some of these insights are incredibly important. And this is about some of that communication and messaging as well. So thank you so much. And as you can see, we've got a bit of diversity here in terms of Ethiopia, very a long way down on an IGIF path and now into the implementation with the alliance component. With Fernand Asiri, they're starting on that journey. And Fernand Bale, we want to get on that journey. So you know, this is really useful. Sergio, and I want to come to you last, Andre, just to sort of wrap some of this together and also with the context of UN GGM Africa coming up as well. Sergio, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity. And first of all, I would like to acknowledge all support that Mozambique is receiving to establish an SD Alliance Data Hub. I would start, it has been a long journey. As you know, it's not easy to put everybody together and be aligned of the objectives or methods that we have. We started making any assessment for all public institution that was supposed to be monitoring the SDG data, SDG goals in Mozambique. And we prepare a report that will give us the information about the state of all those institutions and in term of leadership, the framework that already exists related to SDGA Alliance Data Hub implementation. Now we are preparing a meeting for the all stakeholders to present those results and have engagement of different stakeholders to be involved on all activities that you'd like to implement. Fortunately, we noticed that for the statistic institution, they already developed, they already starting developing any SDG Data Hub. But it's just in a national institute for statistics. We would like also have all other institution involved and also displaying the information that is relevant for the public. One of the challenge that we have is to make sure that all the institution that are producing the public data must make it available for the public. So besides SDG Alliance Initiative, we also have different forums that we discusses and also have the involvement of different stakeholders and sensibilize them to open what must be open. Fortunately, we are getting good results. Many of our institutions, many of our leaders are willing to join this project and also open data to be used in a public way. So at this moment, we are arranging, we are contacting different stakeholders. And in short, in few months, we will be leading a meeting for all stakeholders and we will discuss the future activities that we will set. But based of the reports that we produce, we notice that most of the institution, they are willing to participate actively and open the data that is really public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Sergio. And thank you to all of our four countries for their perspectives. And I say that because my fellow UN colleague, Andre, who is in the UN GGM Secretariat in ECA, the Economic Commission for Africa. And Andre is really responsible for the leadership of the UN GGM Africa Caucus. And we actually have a meeting in a couple of weeks. But Andre, a bit of a helicopter view from the perspective of Africa, some of your thoughts on this discussion today?
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Greg. From where I'm sitting, from the UN GGM Africa perspective, I believe that the SDG Data Alliance will not be only about the technology, the data or human capacities. From many years of working with African countries and trying to push forward the fundamental geospatial data team for sustainable development, we understand that is after all about lack of appropriate policy and institutional governance of data in many African country. And as we all know, policy development is a very sensitive issue because it involves people, hand users and decisions and policymakers. Their influence and their privilege in their respective area. And within the data ecosystem, some of the data ecosystem in Africa, you can see that there is still a competition for power in term of making data product, informations available to the wider community of user. So the challenge will not be, from our perspective, the lack of data. But our ability to transform this data into insight and meaningful information. That's where most of the issue are. And at the Economic Commission for Africa and the UN GGM Secretariat, UN GGM Africa Secretariat, we believe that the main focus of the SDG Data Alliance will be to unlock the hidden potential of data that are available, both nationally and at the regional level. And I see maybe two aspects of that. Ensure that the alliance is oriented where problem solving. Fernando just mentioned the issue they have in Cote d'Ivoire. And I believe that this is the way to go so that the alliance evolved to become a platform across different jurisdictions at national level. And second, I believe that we need to increase the community participations in data collection, processing, analyzing and of course, usage of this data. And lastly, I'm seeing that we have been providing discrete data. We produce, we create, we produce data, we put them in the shelves and just in case somebody need it and we release the data. My sense is that we should now move into Uh, my sense is that we should now move into, um, not just in case data, but just in time data. I believe this is critically important, uh, that we slowly help our member state to shift from, uh, providing discrete data into a stream of specially enabled, uh, not data, but services. Uh, this is where we, we, we believe the alliance, we, we, we make the, the difference and the value addition we are looking for in this kind of initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Andre. Some, some wise words there. Thank you. Certainly about, I think unlocking the data, unlocking the data for development, for impact and, and the stakeholders with it. I think that's a really important concept we need to think about as we, I'm just, I'm looking at Charles as well too. It's going to be really critical in this process. Um, thank you all. We have some time for a few questions. If our audience have any questions at all. Um, you're welcome to come up to a microphone and ask a question. We do have just a few minutes left before John just does a quick wrap up. So if there's any questions, please, please do come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much. And this is very funny. I can't see, uh, is it, it's about SGC, um, SGD data alliance. I could see several countries, but I can't see my country Ghana. Is it that you don't have, uh, an office over there or you don't involve them or what is happening? Because this is a very important program. That's somebody from Ghana at that level should have been here. But I don't, I can't say anybody. So I want to know whether you have an office in Accra or Ghana is left out.
I couldn't hear most of that. I apologize. We can't hear much up here. Sorry. Did you hear it? Okay. Oh, okay. Was that about, what about Ghana? Was that the question? In the data alliance?
Yes, because there's no Ghana, Ghana person here. I am from Ghana.
Yes.
And I came by my own, uh, because I'm a lecturer at the University of Cape Coast. And I realized that the, the conference very important, I came. Now I can see my fellow Africans here and I can't see a Ghanaian at the top day. So is it that, are you left out or we are not left out? Or I don't know.
Certainly not left out. Certainly not. I'm, I'm more than happy to have a conversation as well. So no, please do not take it that way. Certainly not. Um, Andre, did you have a comment too? Yes.
No, no, I, I would like to, to reassure my, 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 my fellow from Southern Burkina. If I take it like that, that we have the ECA there. So ECA, uh, is filling the gap for all the African country. So it's not about a specific country, it's about Africa. And we are sitting here for Africa. So we take it further.
The office might be accessible, then we can assess it. I will see you after here.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks so much. Um, yes, Lesley, did you, did you have a question or comment? Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman of Ghana actually asked it. So there's countries, this great initiative. There are countries that are completing their action plans using the IGIF approach. I just wondered how they get involved in the SDG alliance or the data hub.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Lesley. So when we started the data alliance, part of the challenge with this is, is to ensure it's going to work. Um, and, and that's absolutely critical. And as John said, this isn't something that happens in six months or even a year. It's, it's going to take years. It's a process where it's about developing sustainability. And so there was an initial set of countries that, that were, were, were looked at and that were keen to participate in the data alliance. And so that was the starting point. Now we're starting to mature that, to grow that, to understand that, to know what it takes, to know what the commitment is. And so that enables us now to look at what we do and how we do the future. And we're actually doing that at the moment. But what's, what's really, really important about this is that it takes a commitment from the countries, just as it takes a commitment from those in the alliance and those that are providing the support. And that commitment is not a short-term commitment. And it's about that human capacity that goes with it and the resources within institutions and organizations. And it's also about leadership. Um, that's critically important. Um, and we're very fortunate that we have some really wonderful leaders in Africa. But the, the challenge is we need to make it sustainable and make it work. And at the end of the day, there is a cost to that. And so how do you, you get to that, that level of communication and influence where that impact is being recognized? And that's, that's absolutely critical. Um, but, but yeah, we're, we're very, very happy to have conversations. Sergio has also said it, it's not about a, 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 a certain level of exclusivity, it's inclusive. We're only now starting to get to the level of how we go about doing that. So as we say, we're happy to engage with countries as to how we do this and move forward. Thank you, Lesley. Any other comments from the, the panel on that or are there any other questions? And if not, I'd just like to thank you all. Um, I would, I know that, that I think they want to do a photo at the end. So John will let they have a wrap up. But then after that, I'd like to see if Sergio and Charles can come up and we'll do another photo at the end. But John, if you could do a, a quick five-minute wrap up. Thank you, sir. John?
Great. Thank you very much, Greg. And I hope, um, we all feel that it's been an interesting session. Um, and I hope everyone in here feels that they have learned something. Um, and I think actually all of us on the SDG data alliance team and the countries will have learned something as, as well today. So fantastic. And we started with the top level view, uh, didn't we? About why and how the SDG, uh, data alliance was formed. Because of the importance of the Sustainable Development Goals. And I love that word sustainable. Because the way the SDG data alliance works with countries and the way countries work with the SDG data alliance is to build sustainability into the SDG data hubs and into their country action plans and improving their geospatial capabilities. So sustainability really important. Um, but I think as well, from a country perspective, we've heard it's not just about the SDGs. It's actually wider development, wider development in the use of data, wider need to meet the country's goals, which of course include SDGs. But there are other things too in development. And, and I think this is really important that we, uh, do this. And the data alliance and our work enables this. It's flexible. Um, and I've been involved in conversations with Charles and countries where this very topic has been discussed. How do we use the SDG data hub and the technology to support our wider development in the country? Um, I just stressed that we have a panel here, um, largely, um, yes, completely, I think, Africa. Um, but the, the, the countries involved in this range across the Pacific, Africa, Latin America at the moment. So really broad range of countries are picking up the SDG data alliance partnership, um, the IGIF, the SDG data hubs and pushing forward with these. And it's great to hear actually, um, that, that Fernand, you, you want to join as well with Cote d'Ivoire. You know, and that, that's brilliant. And I think we heard something with Ghana there as well. Um, two words I think I'd like to close with. The first is partnership, partnership for development. The partnerships, um, and, and Chris, uh, from Cameroon talked about the challenges of getting stakeholders working together, the partnerships needed in country. But also this partnership from a group of organizations that wants to make a difference, including the UN, the Kellogg Foundation, Public and so on, wants to make a real difference. And the countries themselves that want to make a difference in their country. And that partnership's really important. That's my first concluding point. My second concluding point is about communication. Um, time and time again, the challenge comes back to communicating the benefits of geospatial, the benefits of data to delivering, um, development in a country. Uh, and that, and Sergio talked about communications, that he communicated and communicated really well. Uh, but this is a real part of the work as we go forward, this communication. And the data hub itself is a great way of communicating the value of data. Not only does it enable decisions to be made in a country, it communicates the value of data in a geospatial way, in a geospatial environment. So it really does show people how geospatial can make a difference. And with that, I'd just like to thank first of all the audience. Uh, but then secondly, all the participants in this panel, both those on stage uh, and down the back, um, or wherever they're sitting. So one last round of applause please for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Um, just wanted to have one last word. And that's, that's the, a comment that we know that this is not easy. In development, it's not easy. In trying to make this work sustainable, especially in developing countries, it's not easy. It's about building trust. And we've built a lot of trust with countries this far, but we have to ensure we don't break that trust as well. It's critically important. So we're going into this with our eyes wide open and understanding that this isn't a quick fix. It's a long-term objective. Um, and it's a bit like development itself, and I would suggest of the world itself and planet earth itself, this is not a quick fix. But it's, it's one of our attempts to actually make the difference. And, and let's hope that as the years pass into twenty thirty, we've made that difference. So with that, I'll close. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your participation.